We do have a quorum present. The media has been appropriately notified. And we welcome you to the Williamsburg County School District Board of Trustees meeting. We are excited to host the meeting in this facility. This is what collaboration looks like. Imagine what we can do when county government, the school district, and our legislators begin to work together. We create new opportunities, new opportunities for skill building and skill sharing. School districts that are performing high functioning and producing high functioning children will produce citizens that will help with the economic development of the county and the overall vitality of our county. We invite county government, school district staff, legislators, all leaders. Let's continue to collaborate, work together, and make Williamsburg County one of the most high-performing districts, not just in this area, but in the state of South Carolina. Welcome. We will now observe a moment of silence. Amen. Our thought for today is coming from Mr. Haywood Baker. He is our legislative liaison. Mr. Baker?
Thought for the day: teamwork. No one knew it better than Henry Ford. He once said, "Coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success." Only with the right team can we make the right decisions, the difficult decisions that must be made. Ralph Waldo Emerson said, "What we fear of doing most is usually what we most need to do."
Thank you so very much. How appropriate, teamwork, and I'm also talking about collaboration. Very good. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, who can be approved of the consent agenda as outlined?
Let me know, sir.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as outlined. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposers? Hearing none, motion carried to accept and approve the consent agenda. Let us now do the pledge of allegiance as we stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Public participation. The board welcomes public participation at all board meetings. Please be reminded that all speakers' remarks must be limited to three minutes or less. We ask that speakers be mindful that this is a business meeting and open to the public. This board asks that speakers conduct themselves professionally and that their comments remain civil and courteous, bearing in mind that they will be heard by people of all ages. This is an opportunity for Williamsburg County residents, community members, and parents and guardians to address the board about issues that serve the public interest and district mission, and the board asks that speakers demonstrate appropriate decorum. Our only action item is approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting.
Hello. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes from our last meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposers? Motion carried to approve the minutes from our last meeting. We are so happy to have with us tonight Representative Caesar E. McKnight. Representative McKnight is with us to break us the educational bills that are currently on the floor or may have been passed through the House. Thank you so very much for being here and for sharing with us.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good evening to ladies and gentlemen that make up our distinguished school board and to all of our fine citizens here this evening. I say hello and good evening. This legislative year, we have had a total of 31 pieces of legislation come through the South Carolina House that deal directly with education, the last one being last week when we took up the bill on critical race theory. We would be here all night if I went through all of those particular bills, so I'm going to highlight the ones that I feel that are most germane to the issues here with regard to Williamsburg County School District and public schools in particular. So with that, Madam Chairwoman, if I have your permission, I'll begin.
You may.
Thank you, ma'am. The first one we'll discuss is House Bill 3006, and this is a bill that amends, that adds sections to Section 59, as to provide public schools and public school districts may not use debt collection agencies to collect or attempt to collect outstanding debts on student school lunch or breakfast accounts, and it also provides that public school districts may not assess or collect any interest or fees on such monetary, or have any monetary penalties for outstanding debts. That matter has passed the South Carolina House and is currently over at the Senate. It's been referred to the Senate Committee on Education. The other bill is, the next bill is House Bill 3100, which it says that this is, this is associated to penalties associated with unlawfully passing a stop school bus, so as to revise the penalties to provide that all fines must be used to purchase additional digital recording devices mounted on school buses and extended school bus stop arms. It also provides that the month of August is hereby declared school bus safety month and makes technical changes, and by adding another particular section. That matter has passed the House. It received a roll call vote of 101 ayes, eight nays, and it is also in the Senate, it's now in the Senate, in the Senate Education Committee. The next bill is House Bill 3319, and this one allows for students eligible for free and reduced meals must be offered the same federally reimbursable meal as ineligible students. To provide such meals must be offered regardless of whether student owes money for previous meals, to provide schools that offer food and beverage separately from federally reimbursable meals, may not allow students to accrue balances when purchasing such items, and only may accept cash payment or allow funds to be electronically drawn from prepaid balances. To provide schools and such school districts may not penalize students for failing to pay for school lunches. Let me just say, we really haven't had that issue here in South Carolina, but I'm certain that you all have seen some headlines throughout the country where you've had some children that were penalized for, for very, for school lunch, weren't allowed to eat it, it was just things that we thought were ridiculous. And that too has passed the House and is, as of the 7th of this month, it's in the Senate Committee on Education. The next bill is 3336. It allows volunteer school personnel who may have been trained, who have been trained by a registered nurse to administer glucogen, insulin, or both to certain students, for those students that we have that are diabetic, that may need some assistance in having their meds administered and injected. Normally, we've been requiring that there be a registered nurse to it, as you all know, due to COVID and just attrition, we don't, every school doesn't have the availability of a nurse, so this allows us to get over that hurdle so that our students can be healthy in school and not suffer any of the challenges they would have if they didn't get their insulin medication. The next bill, House Bill 3590, it so is to provide public school districts may hire non-certified teachers for any schools and career technology centers that have vacant teaching positions five business days before the beginning of the school year. To provide these non-certified teachers may compromise no more than 25% of the entire teaching staff of a school or career technology center. It also provides academic and experience requirements for the non-certified teachers and to provide related requirements concerning the registration and termination of these, these teachers. This bill currently, let's see, the Senate insists upon an amendment, they've sent it back over to us, it passed the House, we have to amend it and get it back there. This school district is no challenge, no stranger to the lack of availability of certified, of non-certified teachers. This bill gives some provisions so that we can set a benchmark as to what the criteria are for, for non-certified teachers. The other bill that was hotly contested was House Bill 4608, and that's the Save Women's Sports Act, and what that bill does is it prevents or outlaws transgendered boys from competing against girls in competitive sports in our schools. It doesn't allow for them to share the same locker room. That bill passed the House and is over at the Senate. And I believe that's all that I have. Let me just say that we have not gotten the budget back from the Senate yet, so I don't exactly know what financial provisions are in there. I read the news article today that says that the Senate is sending it back with a $1 billion tax cut, which I chuckled at, and I said, well, we need all of these new school buildings and we're just going to send back the money. So hopefully it'll come back over, it'll, no, hopefully it will be back this week, and there'll be some pushback from us trying to get you all the, the funding that we need. I can just tell you that anecdotally, there's a, there's some preliminary conversations to change the way that we fund education here in South Carolina. It just needs to happen. The matter, the, the way that we do it now is antiquated, and what it assures us is that the haves will always have and the nots will never get, so that's what we need to get. One other thing, and then I'll open it up to your questions, and you need to make your teachers, your employees aware of this. There's an effort afoot to move the South Carolin, to get rid of the South Carolina retirement and replace it with a 401K plan. I believe that will be disastrous to education, firefighting, policemen, any of our public servants. Why? We've made this tacit agreement with our public servants, and that is, if we, we're not going to pay you much, but when you retire, you can retire with a, with a retirement plan and with health insurance. Well, 401Ks are just essentially those people putting their monies in the market, and there's no guarantee to that. Well, why do you say, why do you say that, Representative McKnight? Well, let's say they retire when the market crashes. They're 66 and they're ready to go home. Their money's gone, whereas if they're in a vested pension, that money's there. So I'm just telling you, I'm for one that believes that we need, if we do not have a pension plan, we're not going to have anyone to employ, whether it be our teachers, our firefighters, any of our public servants. So you need to listen closely, because that talk has already started. The governor mentioned, and he's, mentioned it in his State of the State address, and those are usually warnings of things to come, so we need to be vigilant about that. But so, that's, that's pretty much it. I also say that I'm, you know, I enjoy being your state representative. I'm accountable to you all. You are my home district. I'm proud to know that in the next coming months that you all will have full autonomy. This board has my full confidence and faith in it. I know that you all, I know all of you very well. One of you, I really don't know, but I'm going to get to know, but I know, knowing from all of you, having been taught by one, mentored by another, and gone to school by two, that your interests are the children, and I really appreciate that. So let's play, let's open a new chapter, and let's be the best rural school district in South Carolina. And I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Madam Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. McKnight. I'm going to open the floor for questions now. Here, Mr. Darby, Mr. Darby, I recognize you.
Thank you, ma'am. Are you aware of a program in Fairfield County? And I have a copy of it here to build houses for teachers. It's a poor county. Would you be able to get a program like that in Williamsburg County, which is similar to Fairfield, poor, basic minority? And second question, let's get them all that on me through. Charter schools, do you favor charter schools, or did you favor the closing of DP Cooper? That was closed by state. What is your opinion on charter schools? And second, did you favor the closing of that school? And third question, only $150 million has been advocated for school construction for four districts. That won't build a one school. Can we get the money to build, we're consolidating, but we're not building new facilities. King Street Senior High is old, built 1971, in old part. E.V.C. Murray, which would be an elementary or middle school, was built in 1954. And even though we're consolidating, and another question, are we getting money to, what renovation is going to be done to these schools, this consolidation? Those are my questions.
Excuse me, before you answer, Mr. Darby, I don't know if I got, can you just give us one question at a time?
Oh.
And...
I tried to jot it down, I was going to repeat it.
As long as it's just the items, we, it's, you brought information on the bills currently in the House, so I'm going to think that we may not want to discuss the closing of DP Cooper, that's an old issue. Just give, give us the first two questions, and we're going to, we may come back with you unless I always have questions. May I? Let's do the first two, so I will mind.
All right.
I think your first question was whether or not I favor charter schools or not. The answer to that is yes, I do. I don't believe that education's a one-size-fits-all, and I think that where communities have put in the research and have done the due diligence, and they've decided that they wanted a charter school, I think charter schools can work, and they have worked. The thing that gives me pause is that charter schools are presented, are presented in one way as being sort of a panacea, but really sometimes they're a way of siphoning off public money from public schools. I do not believe that South Carolina has done right by its public schools at all since we integrated, and so I do not believe that, and I'm not going to support anything that takes away money from public schools, but if we can have a climate where they both exist and we're not siphoning off the money, I'm all for that. I believe your second, no, your first question was can we have a program like Fairfield? I think we can have a program like Fairfield, and once we all get you back to where you need to be as far as autonomy is concerned, that's a conversation that we need to have. What they did in Fairfield, Fairfield's a lot like Williamsburg County, except they're just closer to Columbia. They have enacted a program that will allow them to build housing for teachers. If you're from King, if you're from around here, yep, everybody has houses, but people usually own them, and there's not a lot of rental property, and if something is for rent, it's usually not something someone wants to stay in. So I wholeheartedly support that, Mr. Darby, and when I anticipate you all being up full strength by the first of the year, and that's in the same time that hopefully, Lord willing, I'll go back to Columbia, and that's a piece of, of legislation that I think Williamsburg County can have. Your third question was with, was with regard to funding, in that we've only set aside $130 million for education. That's a paltry sum. I'm going to make, take a long answer, but hopefully it'll explain everything. The reason we have the sales tax in South Carolina is because Governor Burns, in response to Brown versus Board of Education, said, okay, well, look, let's try to keep separate but equal, and the way that we're going to keep separate but equal is we're going to get all of this money and build all of these black schools. Bad reason, but a very good outcome. Why? Because it took us out of those two-room shack schools and put us, at the time, in state-of-the-art, cutting-edge facilities. That's how we ended up with C.E. Murray. That's how we ended up with a battery park, a cage, a DP Cooper à la Blakely, Williamsburg Blakely. So the result was that we got a better quality of education, and we saw some real growth within the minority community. I say all that to say this, it is going to take an effort like that to do that, and it's something that we need to ingrain in ourselves, and if we don't see growth in a particular area every 40 or 50 years, the state's going to have to come in with some major stimulus, because, I'll be honest with you, I don't, there's no way that you all can go. If you wanted to, you couldn't build a new school now because you just simply do not have the tax base, and so the money is going to have to come from other sources, whether or not we get innovative and approach private philanthropists. I don't have to tell you, to give you a further history lesson, we got the two-room shack schools because of the Rosenwald family from Sears Roebuck, and they went around throughout the South and gave matching funds, and as a result, black children got educated. So it's going, I think it's going to take a mix of that, and trust me, I'm always in the ear of the governor, because it's going to take something from the executive level to do it. I've got good, I've got colleagues that I serve with, they're wonderful people, I can't say anything bad about them, but their perspective is from a gilded cage, and things are real good in Hilton Head, and that brand-new $75 million school that they built in Rock Hill, I was like, my kids would die for that. But it, it's going to take that, because I keep telling them, I said, guys, we're on the Titanic. You may be in first class, and we're in stowage, but the ship's going down, and we may drown first, but you're going to drown eventually, so let's not just have this, oh, the state's doing good around the peripherals and doing bad in the middle. The middle needs some love too, because we've got good folks here, we pay taxes, and we need, and we deserve a good education. I hope that answered your questions.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Mr. Darby could answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Darby.
But first, thank you, Representative Matt, for your leadership on behalf of the district and students of your district. I fail to remember the House bill number, but the bill that deals with district choice, school district choice, can you, I don't know, you mentioned that, go to the status of that registration.
I, I think that bill, the bill is there, but I don't believe that bill's come out of committee as of yet, but that's, that's something we need to look at. I support, parents' input is paramount. Mom and pop have a say in education, but at the same time, we don't want to be so laissez-faire that we end up with people bleeding off and the school doesn't have resources. I think that in instances where the school district may not be up to par, i.e., failing, I would allow, I definitely would allow for parents to, to, I would be in support of parents being able to go elsewhere. You know, as a parent, we know what our number one thing is, and that is how our kids getting a good education, everybody knows that. So, but I don't believe that bill's made out of committee yet, and I'll look at it, and what I can support, I will support, and what I will, what I want. Oh, the other thing you guys need to understand, there's that, there's a bill that we haven't gotten to the floor yet that deals with that, like that savings plan that'll allow kids to go save money to go to private schools. And in theory, it sounds good, but let's say you allow a parent to save for, let's say we had that, and let's say a kid in Oceta wanted to go to a private school. Well, what school is he saving for? Because how is he or she going to get there? So, you know, we've got to be careful about what we, there, there are some people that really aren't, I won't say they're adversaries of public education, but they're not our proponents, and they need to understand that what makes America the greatest country in the world is the fact that we have a free public education system, period.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair. Question, yes. What are the proposals for teacher raises and step plans for teachers?
There is a rate, there has been a plan in the budget to give teachers a raise, and there's also a bonus. I don't know if that survived from the Senate side yet. Again, again, we haven't done, finished the budget, but I anticipate when we get back on Tuesday, we'll see what that is, but I'm, I'm very confident that they're going to give not just a teacher raise, but a state employee raise as well. The state has done very well in the last two years, they've got a huge surplus, and they want to spread the love around, it's just figuring out how much love they want to spread.
Mr. Baker?
Representative Matt McKnight, I'm kind of, I guess, a follow-up to the funding on school. Is there some kind of an issue with using that money to rehabilitate existing school buildings?
No, sir, there's not, and from what, from my understanding, you all are going to get some of the money particularly to refurbish King Street Senior, well, King Street High School. So no, sir, I don't think that there's any particular thing that would prohibit the funding from coming. Now, naturally, there, you may have a school district that has a building that can't be rehabilitated, that's a very real possibility, but from my understanding, there's a pot of money that's designated for the type, for, for the school districts like us, and based upon the formula that the State Department of Education came up, we, you know, you'd figure we'd be number one or two, well, what are we, like 14 or 15, with Allendale and Hampton leading the charge, and, and I'll have to tell you, having gone down there, we're substantially better than they are. You know, you'd start looking around like, oh my goodness, but no, the short answer is no, sir, there's, I don't believe there's no prohibition on rehabilitating existing schools.
And regarding the teachers, in particular the foreign teachers that we have, I understand they're HP1 visas, I guess, every three years, and they can be renewed for a second year, and is there a question that it can be renewed for a third term?
There has been some talk about extending the ability for, of those teachers to get their visas. I think that's something that we need to do, because again, if we don't expand that and you end up with a, with a, with a personnel crunch like we endured in 2016, 18, whenever we had to import all the teachers from Jamaica, we need to give the school board the flexibility to do that, because I understand the push is towards, you know, online teaching, but nothing beats a teacher in the classroom.
Why, and they're having to pay like $600 and something a month to this firm, I guess, that locates them?
Yes, that sounds borderline like a scam to me, because I've, I've heard some horror stories from, from, from particular people.
Anything to be done about that?
Yes, sir, I think one of those, I think something like that would probably have to come from, on the federal side, because they're dealing with immigration, something that I don't have any control over, but I, I think that a conversation needs to be had with someone from Congressman Clyburn's office so that we can have legislation that curtails that, because what they do, they exploit these people because number one, they're, they're not familiar with the American judicial system, and they're from countries where, you know, hard work and pay money and everything just goes on, and these people charge them an exorbitant amount of money, they sell them cars at interest rates that are usury, and, and so a light needs to be shined on that, and there needs to become some, some penalties, because to me, they're violating federal law. I'm certain there's existing federal law that they're violating, it's just that this group of people, they're not vocal, because number one, they're not voting.
They're good people.
They're good people.
And a lot of time, you know, with, I guess, disadvantaged kids, special needs children on their own time.
Yes, sir.
You know, and that's, that's commendable, and I wish there was some way even for this to kind of help them out on that $600 if the money was there, you know, if we were able to take half of it.
And, and as a suggestion, I think districts like ours should create a climate in which these people can come in and tell, and be protected for whistleblowing, because they're thinking, these immigrants, when they come, the first thing they want to do is avoid contact with the police block, because they don't want to get deported or lose their immigration status. So we need to foster an environment where they can come in and say, hey, this guy is doing this to me, or whatever, and we need to talk to them more, because they generally, they're being exploited because they're ignorant of our process, not ignorant, they're smart folks, they just aren't used to the way we do things here.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Representative McKnight, we really appreciate you being here.
Yes, ma'am.
And sharing your time with us as it comes to everything you've brought to our forefront, the questions and the answers, and even about retirement. I feel pretty confident that you will receive lots of feedback when it's on the floor for discussion, and we do appreciate you taking our concerns back to the House and for, we appreciate you taking our concerns back to the House. Thank you. And working for us.
And thank you, Madam Chairwoman. One thing I want to leave you all with, and I tell this to my various political sub-entities, if there's a budget issue, some monies that you're interested in getting, the time to get those requests to me are in September. The budget, they start doing the budget in September, even though we're not in session, ways and means, they'll, they work year-round, and those budget requests, it's a lot easier to get what you want if you get it in, in the initial budget proposal rather than having the proposal come out and then you're having to ask them to amend it. If you're already in, the chances are greater of you staying in, so just, if there's something So just, if there's something you want, get it to me in September. And when I say get it to me, be as specific as possible. You know, you know the rule, ask for more than you need, lay out a plan, you know, what, an itemization as to what it's going to be so that I can go to the Ways and Means Chairman and say, hey, sir, or, well, we don't know if it's gonna be a sir or ma'am because our Ways and Che, Ways and Means Chairman is going to be Speaker of the House. But you can go to them and say, hey, this is what I need. And it gives them cover, just going up there and say, hey, I need sixty thousand dollars for X, no, 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 no. The more information, the better. But get it to me early so that I can get it, okay?
Thank you, rest assured that this board will get you some information in September.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so very much for being here, thank you so much.
There's confusion in South Carolina, all over the state. The teachers thought they were getting a four-thousand-dollar raise, and there's a lot of confusion about that. It didn't happen for everybody, could you elaborate on that?
I think that's, that's a good question, and we've tackled, I remember us tackling that in the budget. They're going to get, they got four thousand dollars the year before, I believe. And they're gonna get some more money this year, along with there also being a bonus paid to state employees. Bonuses are good, I like them, but that's not, they get taxed at a higher rate. A bonus is almost like a twenty-five, thirty percent if you federally, you, you, you want, I, I want money to stay in their pocket. And one of the things that I suggested that they told me was unconstitutional is that if we pay state employees a bonus, we exempt it from the state income tax. But that idea got shot down. So the short answer to your question is, Mr. Darby, I won't know the specifics about the budget until I get back tomorrow, when that budget comes back over from the Senate and we get our whack at it. So we get, so what happens is now we get another whack at it, goes back to the Senate, and then we have that conference committee where representatives from the House and the Senate come together, hash out the budget, and then the governor will sign it, hopefully. And if he doesn't sign it, then you know, during signing, he died, we'll take up any, um, any veto that the governor, the governor has done. All right? Thank you, sirs and ma'ams.
Thank you again for being here. I have been told this before. I read public participation, but I did not allow enough time if there was someone who wanted to address the board publicly. Typically, if you want to address the board, those que, that question should be presented about ten days prior to the board meeting. But since you are here and I did read it, I will ask if there was anyone that can't prepare to ask a question or make a statement.
I have questions.
Please come to the podium. Would you say your name?
My name is Taylor Scott, and I am a parent, and I have two kids, one at the middle school and one at the high school. And I just wanted to say good evening to all of you, and so good to be here this afternoon. But I do have a question on the funds that come in within the county as far as for the schools and the teachers. Who are responsible to make sure that these funds be distributed where they need to go?
Thank you, Mr. Scott, for your question. The secretary has recorded that, and we, you will get a response from us, it will be written. Thank you. We are now ready for the update from the Williamsburg County School District Deputy Superintendent, and that is Dr. Monica Bruton. Dr. Bruton, are you on? I don't see her name here, but in our board packet, we do have principal weekly updates. These are the same updates provided by Dr. Bruton, as she sends up to the State Department of Education. And in brief, she is planning a leadership academy in June for principals and assistant principals, and also a coaches camp. We know that Cotton here has been in the district, and she says that each school has received their accreditation, engagement review schedule. I was hoping she would be here, she did not notify me that she would not be here tonight. All school renewal plans should be updated and submitted to the district office by April twenty-seventh. There is no report from the Office of Special Services and no report from the Director of Accountability. The ADEP final cycle is collecting evidence. I did note that with the merge of the schools, there are still vacancies for eight teachers. And I do wanna commend the H.R. office. They are actually actively recruiting teachers for our district. They are hosting upcoming job fairs, as well as virtual job fairs for the district. They are in touch with local and area colleges and posting the jobs in the job portal. They are advertising for teachers and assistants that they needed Anderson for the Montessori program. Ms. Shanta, I'm sorry, Ms. Kimberly Mack is the education from the office of the State Department of Education. And she notified us on Friday that she would like to participate in the meeting tonight. Ms. Kimberly Mack, are you present?
I am, I was just here as support and just to, I bring greetings from the South Carolina Department of Education. Sorry for joining late, but I did wanna make sure that you all knew I was here.
Very good, do you have anything that you wanna share with us from the state?
Um, no, I know that, um, the board has been working with the School Boards Association. I check in with Ms. Elmore and just trying to make sure that we establish roles and provide support as you guys are working through this transition phase.
And we do thank you all for entering into this transition with us. We have been attending some trainings, and the School Boards Association, we are in the process of planning another workshop on roles and responsibilities. I will share that we completed the workshop on updating the policies on school board responsibilities and governance. We had assistance from Ms. Stephanie Lawrence with that. The board has met and we have revised that policy, and it has been forwarded to the district secretary. She will put it in a Word document, and then it will be forwarded on to the State Department of Education for your review. Thank you for being here, we appreciate your support. Are there any final statements from any member on the board, anything you would like to share at this time?
Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, my, Mr. Darby?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Exactly how many issues are we short of, I don't know?
In our board packet, it said that there are currently eight vacancies, and that's the only number I saw. And you should have that in your packet in front of you there.
Eight, make this, and how?
That's all that's in, in the information that we received.
Now, the transfer of furniture, equipment, they gonna be able to have all that stuff since we're consolidating, like equipment, like science lab equipment, books, that kind of thing. Those things will be on time, and that, I know, since they're for transit. For example, C.E. Murray's gonna become a middle school elementary, and toilets and bathrooms may have to change stuff like that. I think they're gonna, I know you might be able to answer that now, but I'm like, I don't know.
Yes, sir, I will. You're welcome. Did I hear someone else with a comment?
It was me, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
You spoke of it just a minute ago, but on the board policies that we worked on, there's no timeline, is there, on when it comes to the state board approval or, or review?
No timeline, as soon as the secretary put our changes into the document, she will forward, and as soon as she lets me know, I will let you all know that it has been submitted, and we're waiting to hear from the state.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Three items I wanna share with the board.
Okay.
On Wednesday, May the sixth, at six P.M., I had the opportunity to attend the King Street Middle-Magnus School of the Arts, a Latin musical. And I can tell you, it was definitely a wonderful program. Our children are so talented. Not only did these children remember lines for their parts, these children sang, not lip-sang, they used their voices. And they also performed dance routines. It was a wonderful opportunity to see our kids at their best. And I just wanted to share that with the board, it was a wonderful opportunity. The principal there is Mr. James Caraway, assistant principal is Ms. Erica Marcus. Then on Saturday, April the ninth, I have the fabulous opportunity to attend the Battle of the Bands at King Street High School. And that was definitely, when we talk about collaboration, that was a collaboration between the two schools in our district, C.E. Murray and King Street High School, for those bands to come together. Because it took commitment and dedication and support of children, families, parents, and staff there to bring it together. And they also included Wilson High School from Florence School District One, as well as Manning in Clarity County, I think it's Clarity County thirty, I'm not sure. But they came together, the kids performed outstanding, the gym was full, I think they sold nine hundred tickets, and they had to stop selling. But the outboard was just outstanding, and it was great to see the two schools come together to put on a wonderful performance for the community, and it brought the community together. You can tell which community was there because everyone seemed as one. And then I also wanted to share that we have Little Miss Paige McKnight. She has been accepted into South Carolina Governor's School of the Arts. She is the daughter of Paul Urban and Jennifer McKnight, and I was so excited when they shared that good news with me. So I just wanted to share that with the board.
Thank you so very much, and we have been talking with the superintendent about bringing those successes of our students to board meetings. And I will openly now encourage principals to come to the board meeting and let us know what is going on at your schools. We are interested and we want to be there. There was also a community prayer breakfast, I think is what they called it, in Hemingway. Had the opportunity to attend along with Reverend Diggs and Reverend Darby. And it was great to see the community come together across occupations, race, and gender lines. It was a great experience. And then finally, I just want to say again how much we appreciate Dr. Tiffany Cooks and her staff for inviting us to use this facility as the district prepares to have our own meeting place. Some of her staff is here tonight, and we recognize you, and we really appreciate you being here. Thank you for this opportunity. And until our board room is ready, this is where the school district board trustees will be meeting. The band, the students working together, they call themselves the Merge. And I am disappointed that Mr. Patterson is not here tonight with my T-shirt. Thank you again, board members, for being here. Wanna thank the technology team from the district and from the county, working together to make this happen. The media is here, thank you as always for your presence. If there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
It's been moved, seconded.
It has been moved and seconded that this meeting is now adjourned. All in favor, say aye. And imposers, hearing none, meeting adjourned. Thank you on Facebook too, for Zooming in.
Ref, how you doing? Yeah, I talked to Annie McDaniel about this one.
The facts remain the same. Turn down the bass, push that button, and follow us. My name is T. Wah 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 wah.